Everyone is coming into the meeting now. Everyone's sound should be connecting presently. I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you have available a flag to face, please do so now. Yes, Lori does have one as well.
I have one.
Perfect. And prepare for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Public.
For which.
Nation under God.
Indisputable.
Justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we are going to do a roll call for who's in the meeting. It has been noted throughout the various municipalities that we are supposed to note our location at the time when we are on a Zoom meeting like this. For instance, I'll say Jeff Martin, Dalton Township. And that will do. So if we could do a roll call, Lori?
Sure. Nola?
Here.
Where are you at, Nola?
I'm here.
Are you in Dalton Township? Are you in Village Lakewood Club, Twin Lake?
Oh, Dalton Township, Village Lakewood Club.
Hey, Renee?
Dalton Township.
Lee?
Here, Dalton Township.
Carrie?
Here, Dalton Township, Twin Lake.
Gerald?
Here, Dalton Township.
Lori, here, Dalton Township. Jeffrey?
Here, Dalton Township.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. And for this, we do have three big things to add. We're just going to add them at the end of what we have on the agenda currently. And one of them is a sewer rate study. And then two of them, they're they're separate things, but resolutions for special assessments for private roads. So there will be three additions to the agenda. With those amendments, do I have a motion to accept that agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to address an issue I found on the agenda. I'd like to address.
Yeah.
Mr. Supervisor, I address this board today about the current verbiage on the marijuana ordinance we have before us. As a voted official to Dalton Township, we want to do our due diligence to make certain that we go against any potential lawsuits that would be a waste of taxpayer money. Thus far, every township that has accepted and adopted this type of business has come under siege with lawsuits. Take, for example, right here in Muskegon Charter Township. They already have spent over eighty thousand dollars over the last two years and yet are being sued yet again due to their verbiage being used in their ordinance. Personally, I don't feel that the way this ordinance is worded would be beneficial to our community. After doing, after going over this ordinance, I have found areas that need to be addressed before passing it. I'd like to everyone to look at page five, paragraph C.
On this, just like the notes, we're not actually, you're not actually changing the agenda. It sounds like you're going into the marijuana ordinance itself, which we can do just when that item comes up for discussion.
Okay, we can do that then.
Is there any change to the meeting, something that needs to be added, taken away, just like we need the three things added for the sewer rate assessment and the two special road assessments?
No, otherwise I motion to accept.
All right, perfect. Do I have a second?
A second back.
Nola, seconds and roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Perfect. Next, we have past meeting minutes because we've been having working sessions. We have a number of them. The first one is for the January twenty fifth meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to accept those?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the February eighth meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to accept those?
I move to accept the February eighth meeting minutes.
Lee makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Carrie, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And next, we have our our last past meeting minutes, which are for February twenty second. Do we have a motion to accept those?
Motion to accept.
Made by Nola. Do we have a second?
A second.
I believe that was Lee for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have our treasurer's report and I similar to last month included a number of copies of the same treasurer's report, but it is a single treasurer's report. And do we have a motion to accept that?
I make the motion to accept.
Carrie makes a motion. Do we have a second? Renee, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have paying the bills. Do we have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll motion it.
Gerald, motions to pay the bills. Do we have a second?
A second.
Carrie, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the fire department report. And I know Alan is very busy, but it looks like Chief Stiles is still in the meeting. So if you would like to give us that report.
Thanks, sir. Seventy-two calls for service last month, six minutes and thirty-eight seconds. It included several mutually requests that we've gone to neighboring jurisdictions. The staff is, is once again, have been amazing at multiple call situations. Those have seen that we've had some rather complex issues here in the last last month, but the staff has done once again phenomenally well. I am proud to say that the turnout gear that was ordered prior to you folks taking office was delivered actually a month early. Though it was a month behind due to COVID, but it was actually a month after they anticipated, which now gives it all of our staff a complete second set of turnout gear should we have an issue where they need to launder it. They won't be taken out of service. We're very grateful for that. And the staff is very excited about it. And it is probably the best stuff we've worn in a long time. Again, like I said, our call volume has increased significantly here in the first quarter of the of the year already. But again, we're working well through all that. As you approved last month, the furnaces were replaced. They are working quite well. Obviously, we don't need them as much now, but they are still working well. The AC units will be replaced. Once we get all the snow melted off. And we will bring that to fruition as soon as they get time to bring them in. And we'll have those all up and down. That that work will be completely closed out. Other than that, the last thing we have is that we've had our first budget work session and we look forward to the March twentieth annual meeting where we can get our budget for the FY twenty-one, twenty-two year move forward. Other than that, I have nothing. Does she have a question for me?
Hearing none. Thank you very much, chief. Next, we have the planning commission reports by Lee.
Let's see. The planning commission, we met again via Zoom as we've been. We had board recommendations for zoning changes to the property at twenty-nine hundred Whitehall Road, which was the former wayside property. We approved both a transition from R two to RM and R two to PUD, playing unit development. It just says options for us for allowing things to get in there. Um, let's see, we also also during that meeting, there was a a motion to amend the R two zoning to add senior housing, multifamily dwellings and and the regulations associated with them. There was an update, final update on the Dog Star Ranch and Duck Creek situation. The attorney said there's no Dog Star is meeting all the requirements when of when they were put in. So there's nothing they can do. They're in compliance. Um, let's see, we approved the draft of a sign ordinance amendment to make it easier for people to replace signs or new signs. And then there was also a request from the Sparefoot LLC, the sand mining operation and automobile. They they asked for a reduction to their bond of fifty percent, which is in the ordinance, but we declined and kept it at the one hundred percent, just in case anything happens and we need to clean it up. Um, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Lee. Next, we have our public comment. And if anyone on a computer or a phone wants to use the hand signal to say that they want to pay make public comment. And I know I see one person raising their hand and I had definitely two people that had noted before the meeting that they wanted to speak during public comments. So make that known. And if you would state your name at the beginning, I'm going to ask iPhone to unmute. And we are not hearing anything from you yet. But you are unmuted from my end.
He's trying to talk, but I can't hear him.
Yeah, there's, I haven't used it off an iPhone before. But there has to be some some version of an option button that would then allow you to maybe select a different microphone if you have something plugged into it. Yeah.
We can see you, can't hear you.
We can see, but we can't hear. Yes. All right. Well, if he can, if he can keep working on that and see if he can find that option, we'll we'll notice because we'll be able to hear him, obviously. And do I have anyone else raising their hand? I know I had at least one other person that wanted to make public comment. And I do see that there's a phone number that called in. So I'm going to at this time ask that person to unmute by clicking on their button and see if that will go through. So if the person on the phone would like to talk, they have to verbally let us know since we can't visually see them.
This is the phone line, but I don't have any public comment. I'm good.
All right, we appreciate it.
This is supervisor, if I may, this is Tony Barnes.
Yes, go ahead.
Say, I got a question. You added three things to the agenda. Can you mention those again, please? I missed those.
Yes. So the first one was a sewer rate study. And the next two are both special assessments for roads, one for Johnston Road and another one for Brock Cat.
Okay, so now that I have that information, I'd like to ask the question as far as the sewer rate goes on that particular agenda item. I don't know what you numbered it, but if I may, is that for the twenty-nine hundred or for the entire business part? And if so, how much is that?
It would be the sewer rate in Dalton Township as a township for all the lines. And we don't have a specific rate at this time. It's not setting a new rate.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. All right, let's see. So I don't see any of the hand signals raised. I know we have the one that tried to comment. We still can't hear anything coming across on that. And I had two people marked, a Tony Abbott and Richard Random that wanted to speak during public comment, of course. Of course, names don't always come up directly in the section where I can look at participants. But if I see yeah, the only one is is the iPhone and we can't seem I unmuted it, but the sound doesn't seem to be coming across from that end. And I don't see the other name and I see no other signal of someone wanting to public comment. All right. Well, if you can keep working on it and see if you can get that to work or you could call in with the phone number and we we just had one of those people speak and say that they didn't want to speak, but we know that works as well. So you might be able to try that method and do the public comment in the second public comment. That might be able to work. Going to give it just a couple more seconds in case anyone wants to signal that they want to public comment. Since there is definitely difficulty through this medium. All right, seeing none indicated, we will move on to the agenda items. The first one being the ORV ordinance. Now, this has been discussed. I've heard it discussed quite a bit over the last few years by different citizens. Currently, we don't have one. It has been implemented in different places, the city of North Muskegon, Holton, Eggleston, all have different types of ORV ordinances or golf cart ordinances. That type of thing. And I talked with the sheriff about it and they have not seen an increase of incidents on the road or anything like that. So I've already done a little bit of research into it, but I think it's it's worth opening up the discussion of putting one in place in Dalton.
I agree. I don't understand why we can't have golf carts going down the road. Let's say thirty-five mile an hour speed limit areas or less, where we got people walking, riding bicycles, et cetera, et cetera, down these roads, but you can't drive a golf cart, especially in the areas around the lake here, Lakewood Club. It doesn't make any sense where it's twenty-five mile an hour and you can't drive a golf cart without being pulled over and being fined. I know of an individual who owns property over on West Lake. He owns lakefront property, but his house is of course on the other side of the street. But he has like access across the street where he keeps his boat moored at. He was given a ticket by the DNR for crossing the street, taking his gear from his house to the boat. So this ordinance definitely needs to be revised, I think. I feel that it's a little out of date.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'll make a motion to gather more information concerning RV ordinance.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Carrie, seconds. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call votes. And Lori, your sound is off.
Sorry, I was muted. Lee?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next item is the marijuana resolution. We have marijuana resolution and a marijuana ordinance on the schedule. So this one is specifically the resolution concerning collecting fees for facilities.
Make a statement on that. I noticed that, you know, we had talked about it before being set at ten thousand and now it's down to five thousand per year. And I know that we're supposed to make sure that there's a reasonable amount that we would have to charge for that. And when you consider every township being sued that has ever dealt with this type of thing, do you really feel like five thousand dollars is an act, an actual good amount?
Actually, five thousand dollars is the limit that the state of Michigan allows.
All right.
On this, on this part specifically.
Yes. Yeah.
Right, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of information from a bunch of different places. Recently, I believe it was the state releasing numbers that per facility townships average an income of twenty-eight thousand dollars. We we had that information in the packets. I'm not looking specifically at it. But this fee in particular is a very specific use. It can only be used for for specific things, the enforcing and that type of thing. So this is the separate from all of the total incomes. There are definitely layers of complexity to it, that's for sure. Are there any other discussions around it? Do I have any motion on it?
A motion moving forward.
Do I have a second?
Honestly.
Apparently Gerald seconded it. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And now next, we have the marijuana ordinance, which is obviously a bigger one. And in this section, I have included the information that Lori's been working on. There's a lot of a lot of paperwork to go with something like this anytime a a large change is made. And now all of this isn't the ordinance. A lot of it is information on the applications we're collecting and that type of thing. And I know Lori's been working on updating those. She'd be working with Muskegon Charter Township. She's been working with some people from other organizations on making sure these things are correct. But there is definitely a lot of information there. And I know that comments definitely want to be made here. So I know you you started at the beginning, Carrie, if you want to continue with that.
Okay, definitely. I want to refer everyone to page five, paragraph C. Let me go ahead and read it here. The combined number provisioning centers and marijuana retailer permitted in a township shall be limited to four facilities. Except the provisioning center marijuana retailer in the same building shall count as one such facility. Otherwise, there is no limit on the number of other types of authorized marijuana facilities permitted within a township if located within those areas permitted by zoning for those facilities. Now, this itself is a contradiction and a loophole to own to open unlimited amounts of these businesses. And this isn't what we agreed upon. And alone opens us up to litigation just for this line alone. Now I'll refer now further on to page seven, paragraph C, section three. The name and address of the owner of record of the property on which a marijuana facility is be located, if not owned by the applicant and assigned company of the lease or other legal instrument whereby the owner has permitted the applicant to establish and operate to propose marijuana facility on a property. Now this opens another Pandora's box in which we have seen time and again criminals don't own anything. It's always leased. The applicant needs to be the owner. This would suit the best interest of our community to ensure proper accountability of these owners. Thus, the owner needs to be the applicant as well. Now I would like to refer us to page nine, paragraph F. In which it reads, "The clerk shall approve an application, deny it or approve it with conditions in the permit necessary to verify or assure compliance with this ordinance and the act. In considering issuance of a permit, the clerk shall apply the following standards." Now I want to refer us now to page ten, paragraph two, sections B and C. "The applicant shall appeal. Any supporting materials shall be submitted to the clerk who shall forward the same to the township board together with copies denied application to letter stating the grounds for denial of the application and other relevant materials due to township file on the matter. The clerk may include a memorandum to the township board stating the clerk's response to the stated grounds. Section C reads, "The applicant's appeal shall be scheduled for to be heard at a township board meeting. The applicant shall be given at least ten days written notice of the date, time and place for the hearing to take place for the hearing of the appeal. At the appointed time, the applicant may address the board concerning the appeal. The township board shall render its decision on the appeal by adopting a motion or resolution affirming or reversing. Now, if the board is to be notified on appeal to hear a denial, the board should also be part of the approval process as well. No one person should have the sole discretion of the of an approval. This is about checks and checks and balances. And the entire board needs to hear it before approval. Again, I'm looking out for the best interest of this community and I make a motion to table this until we can go over this ordinance better to ferret out the shortcomings and minimize any legal ramifications in the future."
I second that motion.
Um, well, that's that's great if you table this, but we've already adopted the ordinance to allow marijuana facilities and that is effective on March twenty-third.
I understand that, but what we're talking about here is loopholes within the ordinance as written. We need to fix these loopholes because if we go forward, you're opening us up for all kinds. We agree.
I'm not opening you up to anything. I, this came from our attorney. I had nothing to do with this.
That's why we need to go over it again. That's why we need to table this. Go over it again. Fix these loopholes because I don't want to see us getting in trouble because of something our attorneys did and it's not proper. It sounds like they copied this from from Muskegon County or the North Muskegon Charter Township and they're being sued because of verbiage within our or within their ordinances. And I don't feel that we need this as our township. Our township is not as big as Muskegon Township. Okay, let's face it. And we don't have that kind of money here. We can't afford to be sued for eighty thousand dollars over a two-year period and then come back again and do it again because of verbiage in our ordinance. I think that's our responsibility as as the members of this board to ensure that the verbiage in these ordinances are proper and correct.
Okay, I'm just asking where you got, I mean, I got this from the attorney. Where did you get your questioning or your?
Within your own language, because it says right here, I'm going to refer to the page again, to your right here. It says in page five, paragraph C. Otherwise, there is no limit on the number of other types of authorized marijuana facilities permitted within the township if located within those areas permitted by zoning for those facilities. That's in our ordinance. That's right in there. And that is going to open us up to all, everybody, to anything can come in here. If you're any type of marijuana facility, they're going to be able to come in. We can't stop it because of the verbiage.
Yeah, we've already passed the ordinance saying that they can come in.
For four, I understand that, Lori. I'm not.
No, 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 you're not listening to me.
I think, I think what the what the confusion here is, is the different types of facilities.
Yeah, the different, I mean, we've already passed the ordinance.
Because I believe there's four different types of facilities. There's the the transportation facilities. There's a version of a certification.
Provisioning, there's security, there's and the thing is, we didn't limit any other, we didn't limit any other type of marijuana facility except for provisioning centers and retail sales facilities.
Again.
Everything else, we.
Mr. Supervisor, I again, I asked to table this for future so we can get this taken care of because I see possible litigation. Now, it's your choice. I'm asking you to table this for right now so we get this fixed up.
Or we can table it, but I'm telling you that we have an ordinance in place right now that is effective on March twenty-third.
On the border.
We do not.
On the border. I'm not addressing you, Ms. Hayes. I'm addressing the the supervisor here.
Yeah. So honestly, we have a have a motion.
Either we're going to table this or we're not. I made a motion. Someone seconded.
We have a motion. We have a second. So we're in discussion. It's a reasonable thing to discuss. Because we have, so if the one kicks into effect and we don't have the general ordinance and the zoning ordinance aligned, then we have a conflict in our own ordinances and that is, I assume, definitely going to be a decent problem. So if we put this on for one month, then we'll have a few week overlap of of an odd time. I'm not sure exactly if that opens us up to problems of lawsuits in that few week time period or not. Gerald has the sand raised. Yeah.
Motion to adopt and pass.
Well, we already have one. One motion and second on the floor. All right, so is there any other discussion on the motion by Carrie before we vote on it?
What I tried to say, and I don't, and I understand your concerns, but we already have an ordinance in place that is going to take effect in two weeks. We have to we have to take applications for marijuana facilities. I have to. No ifs, ands or buts, or we are open to lawsuits because we're not following our ordinance. That's all I'm saying. I don't, if you want to table this, that's fine, but I'm telling you, if we don't we, I have to accept applications starting on March twenty-third. Or we open the township up to lawsuits for not following our ordinance that we passed last month. That's it right there.
Lee, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, we still have to approve, I mean, it's not like they can just open up. I mean, they still have to come through the township to get approved.
Absolutely.
And any, any type of marijuana facility at all.
Absolutely. They have to come to, they have to come through the town. Absolutely. They have to come to, they have to come through the township. They have to go through the application process and they have to be approved by zoning, the building departments. They, I have to check and make sure that they are properly licensed with the state of Michigan. They don't walk in, fill in an application and say, oh, I'm going to open. It doesn't work that way.
So ahead.
Can you explain, um, one of the concerns we have is, and Lori, this is not personal, just so you know.
I know it's not. It's just, I, yeah, I know.
But you're in a, you're in a hot seat and I get that.
Yeah, I know. I knew it.
But I want to make sure that we're clear. We're concerned. One of the things that we're concerned about is that a lot of this pressure is on you. And as, as elected officials, we know that we're also accountable to the people. We want to make sure that this isn't just you or whoever is in your position, male, man, woman, whatever, that in, in the future is the person, the only person making those decisions. That's one of the things that has a red flag on it for us. Because we want to make sure there's a checks and balances. We all know how our government works. Checks and balance. So we're concerned about you having, again, I know you have a lot of the work on your plate, but what is your responsibility as one person to be making those decisions about who is going to be stepping forward and who is going to be number one on the list, number two on the list, number three on the list? And is there, are we misunderstanding? Is there a place where we are part of this decision and we're not seeing it?
Ultimately, according to the state of Michigan, it's the clerk's office. I mean, if we, if we do the zoning where they have to come before the board, that can change. But I, I am not ultimately the only one because it still has to go through, it has, they have to go through the same process that anybody opening a business does. They have to go to zoning. They have to go to the building inspector. They have to, we have to have a fire inspection. There are, I mean, and those processes have to happen before I'm even going to look at them. And they also have to be licensed with the state of Michigan.
Uh, Lorraine has her hand up speaking. I'm gonna unmute her.
I just wanted to point out that this ordinance isn't new. It's corrections to what got adopted last month per the attorney's recommendation. The ordinance that got adopted last month had, um, this has changes because the marijuana laws kept changing. This is the most up to date. The attorney advised us to make these corrections. It's not a new ordinance. It's corrections to specific sections of what got adopted last month.
Well, and the general ordinance was from before that.
So that covered only medical marijuana.
Right. And so that's already been.
This is just an amendment to include the recreational portion.
Right. And so the medical one has already been in effect.
It is, yeah, it is there.
Now, so it's operating as is. And so on these, on these concerns, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how to address them all, uh, of course. Uh, but definitely like, so for instance, the first one that Carrie brought up in section five about the different facilities, it could be made more clear um that the facilities are separated. Uh, it definitely could. And I wonder if what we could do is uh realizing that we have one motion with a support on the floor and another motion uh on the floor as well without a support, um, that we could if we pass this and then we were to adjust those, for instance, to make section five more clear and then pass that again, it doesn't leave us open to these contradictions between the zoning ordinance and the general ordinance. But we could make adjustments uh within a short period of time with, within the April meeting. Yeah, Renee.
Two things. Number one, all the counties that have opened themselves up to this have all had litigation. We've already established that. Number two, if we accept it the way, I don't know about you, maybe you trust every attorney that you know.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't. So just because an attorney drew something up, sorry, that's not enough for me. So when I'm reading through these papers and I'm looking at these things that have loopholes, um, I'm not comfortable. I will vote no. I, there's no way I'm going to adopt this. Now that's one thing. The other uh thing that we've been discussing, because we've been doing our due diligence and we've been making phone calls and we've been looking into this. And one of the things that have been getting sued, and I believe it's even in Muskegon County, please correct me if I'm wrong, that it is because of the order that they are being accepted because we are only allowing so many facilities. The, you know, the, the scramble is on. And those people, some of those people are coming against and they're, you know, and they're, they're suing their townships. We have to be very careful whether, no matter what we adopted last month, which you know how we voted on that. Um, regardless of that, we have to be looking forward for our township and we're not comfortable with the way this is written up, lawyer or not.
I agree. Attorneys are, are there to make money. That's what they do. They, they care whether in court, out of court, they're getting paid one way or the other. And we all know that. I've never seen an honest attorney yet in my life. And I've dealt with him a few times. So let's be honest here. We need to do our homework, not the attorney, okay? I don't trust attorneys, number one. You trust an attorney, you just dance with the devil. And we all know you dance with the devil, you're going to get burned. This ordinance is not properly written. We need to at least take a week, at least take the time, rewrite this silly thing, get rid of these, some of these loopholes that we, I just exploited. I mean, if I was an attorney, if I had a half a brain stem, I could exploit this in any court right now. Okay? And guess who's paying for it? The township. So are we here for the township? Or are we here for somebody that wants a business?
All right. Well, let's see. What about the option? So, because if we turn it down, we got that few week overlap, which would be a major problem. Unless we call a special meeting, we get it adjusted and we call a special meeting to do it before we would get those put in. Actually, I think, I think that would work.
I agree. I go, let's do that.
Yeah, you know, the township of Muskegon Charter Township, I was speaking with the zoning person there this afternoon and he said they took two years to draw up their ordinance. They had sheriff's department, they had the state legislature, they had all of these checks and balances in place and they still got sued because of the way the ordinance was worded. So throw a wind of caution, take the time and do it right. Because you know what? The, the people that, that want to do all of this, that they're just looking for a quick way to make a buck. And if you can sue a township, guess what? That's a quick way to make a buck.
Yeah, ours is coming from 2019. So it's definitely a, definitely a long-term thing. Uh, do you have your hand raised again, Lorraine? Is that? Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, what got adopted a month ago is going to get the township in trouble. And the other thing is the zoning clarifies where the different types of marijuana uses are allowed or prohibited. That part's in the zoning. Um, when you look at this one that says otherwise, there is no limit on the number of other types, blah, blah, blah. You have to also look at the zoning ordinance. And that's my last comment.
Right. So as long as, as long as they go into that, or zoning ordinance, as long as they qualify, they can take it. So again, this is a loophole.
After.
The verbiage is, is not proper. Uh, uh, like you said, a week, emergency meeting, something. We need to at least fix this hole. I'm sure we can get back together again on this next Monday, even this Friday. Something has to be done on the verbiage on this to get it clarified and make sure we do not get hammered on this. That's all I care about. I already know, yes, it's been, it's been, or it's been voted on. Yes, I know it was pushed through. It should have been a two vote, but it was a one vote and that's okay. Burning curve. But we're going to get to the bottom of this because this, this is not right. And I'm telling you right now, this is going to haunt us. If we pass this right now as is written, this will haunt us. Okay, 20 years MBOC. I've heard all the convicts, little slick slides. I know how they work. I know how they think. And I'm telling you right now, the way this is written, we will get burned.
I think it's reasonable to do a, a meeting next Monday. Is there, is there any other comment before we vote on Carrie's motion on the floor to table this?
I just got a question for Lori, Jeff.
Yeah.
And uh, this was coming from somebody else that asked me uh if this was recommended by the attorney.
Yes, it was. It came directly from the attorney's office.
And I would like to point, if I could, I'd like to point out, it's the same attorneys that went after a farm in our community knowing full well that they could never win that lawsuit.
That's right.
Same attorneys. Why would I trust those attorneys? I'm not. I won't.
Any other discussion before we vote on this?
I guess just a question on the vote, like if we want, if we want to do this special meeting, do, is that what we have to do? We have to table this to do that? Is that how that's going to have to work?
I think, I think that's a reasonable way to go about it if it is tabled. Um, if it's tabled and then left until after the date at which we're accepting applications, then I think we're in uh, in a significant problem situation.
I guess then should we add for his, can he change his, can we change the motion to add that for a special thing for next Monday or do we just?
The motion can stand as is, um, because we, we can just, we can just agree that we're going to have a meeting then.
Okay.
And I'll call a special meeting. Um, we'll post it, go through the normal process of posting the, the notification for a meeting.
All right. Just wanted to clear that up.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Any other discussion before we vote on the motion?
I just want to make a comment. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, for most people, when uh, you know, packets are ready and you go through them and you have comments or concerns or anything like that, you know, business hours, business hours are nine to 4:30. If you don't understand anything or anything like that, we're always here. We can walk you through stuff. It's that simple. Everybody's had multiple times, multiple, come in here, discuss things with people and they just never show up, show up.
More paperwork on Friday. Thursday, we got to pack it on Thursday.
I picked up Thursday afternoon.
Think we don't work outside of Dalton Township?
Still here, still got phones.
Needs to be tabled.
All right. Well, let's do, so we got a motion and we have a second on the floor for Carrie's uh motion to, to table the issue. We'll do a roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Hey.
Lori, no. Jeffrey?
Yes. All right. That is tabled. And next we have the senior millage. Uh, so we have information included on age well, which is um what the township has done in the past. On this, um, quite, quite a bit of information, um, but we need to let the, the county know in a certain length of time. And we have to have a proposal written up, um, which is what this is. Uh, is there any discussion or any motions on the senior millage?
I make your motion to accept.
All right, motion made. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Lori's seconds. Do we have any discussion? Then I'll just note that this is uh using the $28,086 um in the senior millage funds and it will be upon the approval of the county commissioner, uh, Kim Seer, because that is written into the process of how this works. Hearing other.
Yeah.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Lori, yes. Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Good.
Gerald.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Next, just a note about a, a working session. Um, so we have a decent number of things that would be good to discuss in a relatively um lengthier way. Um, the trucking ordinance, having a transfer station, free dump day or free dump pass. Um, we have some things with um private road assessments that we will discuss today, the details of an ORV ordinance, um sewer inspection and maintenance schedule and, and these different types of things. So it'd be good to have a discussion on those. We don't need a motion. We don't need a vote on this. Um, but March the 29th at the end of the month on a Monday at 6:00 PM, if that works for everyone, we can have a meeting then.
There.
Perfect. Sounds good. Next, we have the R2 special land uses. Um, so this is just a start. You know, there definitely has to be a pace to making changes on these types of things. And I've definitely taken an aggressive uh approach, uh definitely with the planning commission and the zoning office on actions being taken. And that will have to, have to probably slow down a little bit. Otherwise, we're going to overwhelm the system on this. Um, but this specifically is for allowing multifamily housing and senior housing, um, which currently are not available as special land uses in R2. Um, if there's any discussion or a motion on this.
I may should make a motion to accept.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nola's seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Carrie.
Yes.
Nola.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee.
Yes.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. All right, the land sale. So this land sale is about the property on Goose Egg Lake. And we have not received, uh, we did not receive any bids on this property. Now, looking at this over again, it was brought to our attention uh that it was assessed at a decent amount. We put a minimum on it of $54,000 for the three lots together. It was pointed out that there is not currently access uh to the property. Access would be, have to be worked out um with some sort of easement deal or um unless a neighbor brought it, bought it, they would obviously have access to it. Uh, so doing that, so the assessor looked at it without having access to the property, a landlocked property, um, which significantly reduces the value of the property. Soon as someone is able to set up an easement or access in some way, obviously, that uh, that value will go back up. And we have had different inquiries into it, um, but no actual bids um for some various reasons. The reason uh this was put in here like this and uh there wasn't even, there wasn't a notice in the newspaper is because in our land sale policy in Dalton that currently exists, um, if the land is not buildable, there is a part where we don't put a notice because only the neighbors could buy it. Um, this falls in a weird spot because it's not buildable because of the lack of access currently, um, not just the size. Uh, so it fell into a, a kind of a weird context, a weird situation. Um, so that's where we are with this piece of property. Any questions?
Make a motion to accept the sealed bids.
Perfect. Uh, a motion to accept the sealed bids. Are you making that with a minimum or without a minimum?
Um, let's go with what they're offering right now. Let's see what they get, what they go from there.
Oh, well, so we don't have an offer, um, because no one, no one put in a, a bid of any type. Um, the amount I included, the $17,000, we just, without having access, um, that's what the tax assessor then reassessed that property value at. Um, Renee has her hand raised. Go ahead.
Um, I just want to mention that how, well, let me ask a question. How long has this property been out there for someone to make a bid? I mean, it's been, it's March, so they had like a month. I mean.
A month, correct. Yep.
It's not very long. I mean, this is not typically your buying season. So, I mean, we shouldn't be in a hurry, I don't think, to lower the price and lowball it, just because it's only been a month.
It's, no. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's reasonable. We could come in um somewhere in between the numbers as well. I mean, before is 54,000. Um, you know, I was, I, I just included these numbers, 17,000, which definitely, I mean, that's a, that's a very large gap uh in between those two numbers. So that is, that is very reasonable. The, the minimum could be set somewhere in between there.
I make a motion for $40,000 for minimum bid.
Okay. Motion made. Do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call votes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes, ma'am.
Nola.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Gerald.
Yes.
Lori, yes. Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And then on that, we'll do a posting because it falls into that weird context, we'll do, uh, public posting. And, you know, if someone buys it, it's, uh, it's up to them to work out whether they're going to have easements or, or access to their land. Next item is accessory building ordinances. Uh, and on this one specifically, it's been, I think it's kind of a known thing in the township. That if you have a relatively small amount of land, five acres, and you have. Acreage over thirty, uh, then you have the same number of accessory buildings and the same footage, uh, for those areas. Seems like there definitely could be adjustments made there, and I know there, there have been in the past, um, but I think it'd be reasonable for the planning commission to look at that again.
I agree, I make a motion for the planning commission review to zoning ordinance for that, four dot two dot one H one. And four dot two dot H dash two plant pertaining to accessory buildings.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Gerald, do we have a discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kerry?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Next, we have the items that were added to the agenda at the beginning. And the first one is to do a rate study, uh, for the sewer assessment. And what triggered this is that late on Friday, we received in the mail. Uh, and a thing from the, an audit manager, uh, through the state. And they are essentially not satisfied with the audit that was done in March of twenty twenty for. The fiscal year previous to that. Um, we have to provide them with more paperwork, which we'll definitely do, and we have to come up with a plan. Uh, to make up the difference between our revenues and our debts, um, and, and address that, that deficiency. Uh, so on this, it, they even recommend that we do a rate study, now I was already having a rate study done. By the Muskegon County Department of Public Works, because it definitely needs to be done. Um, that is, that is very useful for us to come up with those numbers and make progress on this and, and try to balance these. These accounts that need to be balanced, um, but will probably, I, I talked to the head of the Department of Public Works, will probably not be accepted. Um, by the state for inquiring into this audit. Um, we do have to respond to this within thirty days of when they send it out, um, which was March second, so relatively quick, which is why I added on this agenda. Instead of, um, pushing it to the next month. And, uh, so the basic plan is to get a rate study done by a third party. And, uh, get forward on this and, and get the state the paperwork they need and, and come up with a solution for, um, balancing this account. That's the, that's the basic idea here. Any questions on that?
Um, is there a cost and do, who, who is it that would do that study?
So there will be a cost, uh, because we'll be hiring someone to do it. I do not know what that is. Um, so I just, I got this paper on, um, Friday and, and talked to some people today on what that, what that would look like. I have information coming to me, uh, currently on who would be able to do this study and acceptable, um, by the state and that type of thing. Um, but I do not have numbers and I do not have names yet. Like I said. Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead. What budget does that come from? That's probably more of a Gerald question.
Hmm, Lori is the most familiar with the budget, um, but I.
It can come from, it, it, it can come from this budget. This year, or it can be budgeted into next year, depending on when we get the numbers.
When we actually pay for it.
Yep, thank you, just learning.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good question because we're right on the edge of budget season. All right, uh, so. On this, uh, do I have anyone to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept.
Perfect, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kerry?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And next, the last two items here are similar. They are for special assessments for private roads. Now, these were up in October of twenty twenty, so they should have been done. Previous, uh, to that, and they were, uh, they're for, the first one, um, resolution twenty one, or twenty twenty one, uh, ten. Is for Johnston Road, and because there's resolutions for these, I will pull them up on my screen. So this is, uh, this is the Johnston Resolution. And what happened in the situation is they, they got. Put off, they, they weren't done in twenty twenty before October, uh, as they, they should have been done to continue forward. Uh, they were originally done in September of two thousand fifteen for five years. Um, so they, the assessment itself ran out and they weren't able to be accessed on the taxes. Uh, now, there were some funds and they continued, uh, to have some service for those roads. Um, but it has to be solved relatively, uh, quickly here, which is why I'm also adding it to the agenda. Rather than, uh, pushing it off to the next meeting, um, which was my first inclination. Um, but we are a bit up on time on this. And so we're going to have to come up with, uh, a solution to this, and basically, the proposed solution. Is to do these resolutions of intent, um, for the special assessment districts. Uh, and then set up, uh, maybe, uh, I have the lawyer looking in to exactly how to do this. A revolving fund, um, to take funds out of, uh, the general fund. To fund these accounts to get the roads taken care of like they have been while the special assessments are set up. And then we have to go through a district hearing for the special assessments, and then, uh, a hearing for the role of the special assessment. So it definitely is a process, um, should have been done during the year, uh, twenty twenty before October. So we're definitely, um, behind on these, uh, and, and. Well, that's, that's the, the basic situation, uh, it's definitely not great. Um, but if we can move it along over the next few months relatively quickly, we can, um, get the funds back. Up to where they're supposed to be, the special assessments back in place. Any other, any questions on these?
Okay, so what's going to be impact on this on our budget this year? Since this wasn't factored in.
Hmm, so basically how this works as far as the budget goes. Is that, uh, the roads take a certain amount of money, because these are private roads that a special assessment are done on. The money cannot come out of other funds, um, which I also have to look into a few of the details. Um, we have a thing from the road commission about signing up for them, uh, signing the contract for them taking care of. Our different types of gravel roads, and so there's, there's a couple of different categories. The one is gravel roads that are just the, your normal roads, uh, that we pay for. We, we cut the cost with the road commission to take care of those. The other ones are borders with other townships, um, and these are split between us, the other township and the road commission. And then you have these, um, these private roads, and so on the list from the road commission, there are five. Cat Road, Brock Road, Johnston Road, Park Avenue and Fifth Street. Now, there should be special assessments from the people that are benefiting from these roads. That go into a fund and then are paid to the road commission to take care of these roads. Um, so it's, it's not coming out of other funds.
Okay.
Now, we, I need to look into the legality of Park Avenue and Fifth Street being on this list. Because as far as I know, they're not named in the special assessment up to that point, so funds should not be going to that from a different fund. In which they're not named. Um, Cat and Brock are combined and Johnston is a separate one. To, to do this, to maintain maintenance on these, instead of letting them lapse. Um, because the timeframe was, was missed, uh, in last year. We, that's the revolving fund, and essentially we can take money from our funds, from our general funds. And use them for the roads as we're setting up the special assessment district, because once we set that up and it's able to go through on the taxes. Then the funds will come back in.
Okay. Okay.
It's kind of a, kind of a Band-Aid, uh, for, because something wasn't done at the right time.
Hey, Peter, pay Paul, got it.
Yes, yeah, it is kind of like that. Good, any other questions on this? Hearing none, do I have a motion, uh, to accept resolution number twenty twenty one?
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty one.
Dash ten.
Dash ten.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Lee seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kerry?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. And the next one is the same situation, it's just for Brock and Cat, now Brock and Cat are on the same one. Um, that's why we do, we have two instead of three, which is the way it's been for the last three years, and this is. Set up in the same way, it's just twenty twenty one dash eleven, uh, for the Brock and Cat special assessments.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept twenty twenty one dash eleven.
Do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
And second by Renee, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kerry?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. All right, a lot happened in that meeting and some unusual things, with adding things to the agenda because of the timeframes. Uh, at this time, we're going into our second public comment. Uh, if anyone would like to make it known that they want to make public comment, please use the hand signal. Um, if you do not know where that is, you physically raise your hand if your video is on. Um, make it known, and for the people on the phone lines, I will, uh, ask you to unmute, because I know that system's a little bit differently. Uh, so if you want to make a comment, that will be available. Tony Barnes, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, hey, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Excuse me, my question is with respect to the minimum bid. That was recommended for forty thousand over by, uh, Goose Egg Lake. Um, I'd like to know if that, uh, property is deeded to us, do we buy that from the DNR, from the state of Michigan? Uh, typically with those properties over there, we did buy them from the state of Michigan for a dollar in some cases, in most cases. Um, so for us to be the realtor for the state doesn't make any sense. If you sell that for forty grand. We get to keep the dollar, the rest goes to the state, so as I understood this, um. That property that's in Forest Recreation, whether it becomes available through the land bank or through the treasurer's office for back taxes, whatever. We shall buy that so that it stays public land for hunting and fishing, so. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go sell on the property if we only paid a dollar for it, we're, we're literally being the realtor for the state. Um, so I, I'd like to know who is the original deed holder, if it's from the state of Michigan. And second, just with respect to a point of orders for clarification, I mean, you should probably make sure that we're asking for. A motion before there's any discussion, because, you know, two or three people's lack of understanding of an ordinance, um, doesn't justify. Having a table before it's motion, so you should probably have a motion to approve before you do discussion that solves some of this, so that you don't have. Tables before the motion passes, so that's my two cents, so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
I appreciate that. And do we have any other? Public comment? So I see none of the hand indicators. I am going to ask the phone number to unmute again, and you can just let us know if you want to make a public comment.
No, no comment, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to scan through the videos as well, uh, we have Rory as the blue hand raised, go ahead, Rory.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, just one thing, Chris, this is a question, um, regarding the, uh, verbiage on that marijuana ordinance, um. I'm not sure where it came from, you said it came from the attorney, um. Is it comparable, is it the same wording that's in these other townships ordinances, or how did that come apart? Uh, or go about getting that, I guess. Um, I would be. I, it's alarming to me if, if all these other places are getting sued, that we're using the exact same verbiage. Um, if you paid an attorney to write it and they just basically copied it, um, just, just a food for thought, I guess, that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, good point, appreciate it.
Do we know?
And if the attorney copied and pasted it? Do certain extent, I'm, I'm highly confident, uh, that they do. Usually in the legal field, in the computer programming fields, uh, you see an immense amount of copying.
So they copy paste it potentially. For our township. That was used in other townships where there's open litigation and current, so. Do you see where, where we need some special, we need some help with this one?
Hmm, yeah. All right, so I don't see any blue hands raised. Uh, I mentioned in the last meeting, I'm, I'm not going to allow double comments at the end because it becomes a discussion between, uh, members. I also have the chat turned off and discouraged, um, holding up of any other kind of communication. Um, but I am going to scan through the videos, uh, in case someone wants to physically raise their hand or indicate, um, that they want to comment. I am attempting, uh, to not miss anyone. I am seeing no indication of any other public comment, uh, is there any board comment?
I got a question about that property, Tony Burns had mentioned about hunting on it. Is that really enough property that you can hunt with other dwelling around it?
Uh, that property is just a little over two acres total.
So you can hunt on it?
Oh. Not that one in particular, um, there are other properties, uh, a, a lot of, a lot of property, uh, kind of around the village of Lakewood Club. Um, that are through the DNR and the state to Dalton Township and, um, that's, that's the parties he's talking about.
Okay, I was just curious because he had mentioned it being used for hunting purposes, so. Kind of throws that out, okay, thank you.
Some of that area is quite large and connected, um, in the area, so definitely, it makes sense, um, what he was talking about. As a concern.
Okay.
Good, anything else? All right, uh, hearing nothing, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Nola seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Kerry?
Yes. They don't understand the insurance to cover any lawsuits against them, I guess, I don't know. They don't understand it.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. All right, thank you all very much, have a good evening.